Yeah, ten, nine. We're calling the meeting to order six seconds early. Yeah, here we are. And this is, this is a hearing about the our grant request for congressionally designated block grant hazard mitigation.
No.
Disaster recovery. And this is just to summarize. Who here knows what the river grants were that program? Come on, Deb. Let's see your hand. Hi. Yeah, okay. Those grants were applied for, they started writing those grants. We started writing those grants with the help of Wyndham Regional. In January, February of last year and we the, the process for that is we, we town of Weston with a $50,000 MTA grant. We initiated a hydraulic study to look at the, you know, the, to try to model the flooding here in town. And then Wyndham Regional did a continuation of that study. So that we would have, so we would be able to determine what the effects were of modifications to the bridge here over, over the West River. Andrew? Oh, look at you, front row in the queue.
It's the only thing left.
I know. That's your penalty for being two minutes late.
No, one minute.
Never mind. So the basic, basic methodology for those was armed with the, the hydraulic studies. The the engineering firm who is, I'm blanking on right now, that was retained by Wyndham Regional modeled increasing the hydraulic capacity of the bridge. Either by widening the, the distance between the abutments or raising the bottom of the bridge. And they also modeled the upstream effect and downstream effects of removing the dam by the, you know, by the community association dam by the mill yard. And the, in addition, they did thirty percent engineering studies, which apparently is enough to get cost estimates, rough cost estimates for those two projects. But those studies didn't address all the details of it. And but the conclusion was that if the bridge is why, you know, if you increase the hydraulic capacity of the bridge, you reduce the flooding in town in a July 23 storm by about a foot and a half. And if you remove the dam, you reduce the flooding upstream of the dam by three feet, maybe a little more. That would be in the, in the area of the firehouse. So and then they also did some cost estimates, which I recall were like a million roughly, and this was surprising to me, it was about a million six for the bridge and two, two for the or two, one for the dam, which included some floodplain activity and getting rid of the silt. You know, the sediment upstream for a total of about 3.6. So those grants were applied for, and it seems as though there is no way we're going to get those grants. Most of that money. And, and this is a little bit new news for me. I had, was still holding out hope that we might get those grants, but apparently, and, and that, that grant was drawing out a pool of FEMA money for the state, which has basically been spent on on buyouts. And we have three buyouts in town, as you guys may, may know. Two have closed and one is still in process. So what we're here for now is to have a hearing on the, another avenue to get some, some funding, some grants to continue the process. Which would include, now the, the numbers that I quoted, total of 3.6, that includes a gas at inflation and it includes doing the other 70% of the engineering study, which would take about a year from the time you get the grant. And yeah. So at the moment, this is the last chance that I know of to, to get some money to, to do these projects. And again, it's congressionally directed block grant for disaster recovery. And apparently this is HUD money. And I'm a little unclear as to whether it's in the state or not. Alyssa, do you have, can you unmute and?
Yeah. Yeah. So the, the acronym, it's CDBGDR, and that is actually Community Development Block Grant. It's not the, the CDS money is the congressional directed spending. That was another option we went for. And the, the Hazard Mitigation Grant Program was the first option that we went for. That was where we got the river project through that avenue. So this is the third chance at trying to find grant funding for this project. This is, at this point, probably the only likely, I mean, potentially likely one to fund this project. It is 100% money. And it is, it does derive through HUD, Housing and Urban Development at the federal level. They give a pot of money to the Vermont DHCD, Department of Housing and Community Development, and then they, DHCD at the state level will then distribute the money according to HUD gives some guidelines where of how the money has to be broken out into certain areas, higher priority areas for housing and et cetera. They have a whole, a whole way that they have to, you know, mathematically break out the, the money and how it's expended statewide, but it is, you know, controlled at the statewide level versus the CDS money or the HMGP or at the federal level. And, and so this is a little bit, you know, I think it's a more ideal to have it at the state level where the decision making is happening. But at this point, like Jim said, this is really the only one.
Allison is.
It's Alyssa Sabetto. She's from Wyndham Regional.
Yeah, yeah, I should have introduced myself. Yeah, Alyssa Sabetto. I'm a senior planner with the Wyndham Regional Commission and I've been, you know, leading the, the work on the river project. So, you know, we, we've been working with this project in Weston for a long time now.
Is there anyone here? Can we turn this aside? Is it high enough?
Should, can, can we move it to the other end of the table just to get it closer to the back row?
That's a good question. I'm ready to put.
Andrew, did you bring your earplugs? Yeah. Okay, so I, I think we've, we've spent 10 minutes here outlining it. You all obviously have some questions. So let's see some hands. Yeah, Annie.
I would just like an overview of what the project is. I did read the proposal today, but I still had some questions about exactly what it is you are planning. I was out of town. I did not attend.
Well, you don't need any excuses. We just, there's your question. Okay.
What, what mitigation for the bridge or I assume the removal of the dam rather than a partial removal? I know when we did the other day, we had different options. So full removal, partial removal. I mean, I just don't understand what the project is and what you're really applying for.
We're, the, the project, again, we've only done thirty percent engineering studies for both of these projects. So for instance, on the bridge, we don't know whether we're gonna raise the deck or not. If we do, it's only going to be a matter of two or three or four inches. The, the key thing on the bridge to increase hydraulic capacity, that bridge was built in 1975. The bottom of the bridge, which is all the river cares about, was below the 1975 hundred year floodline. Don't ask me why. So, but we have two options. One is to widen it and the other is to raise the bottom. One of the, one of the ideas that was considered, which showed up in the drawings, and I gotta say, has been very controversial, is to go with a pony trust bridge. Like the one that was here before this bridge. But the elegance of that is that you don't, the I-beam supporting the bridge can be thinner because the bridge is supported by the trust above. So you don't have to raise the road level, but you can, if you do the pony trust bridge, you can raise the bottom of the bridge, again, which is what the river cares about, by about nine or 10 inches. The other side of that is to move the, the east abutment 10 or 12 feet toward Route 100 to widen the bridge. And we don't, I mean, it's only a 30% engineering study, so all these details need to be worked out. And, and, you know, that's going to take, it's going to be a year long engineering study and they're gonna, they're going to address all those problems, address the questions and, and if something is, doesn't develop a community support, then, you know, we'll do something else. The if you, if you raise, I don't have the numbers exactly, but pretty close. If you raise the bottom of the bridge nine inches and increase the width by 12 feet, you increase the hydraulic capacity by 40%. But if you don't raise the bottom of the bridge and leave it basically where it is, but just widen it, you increase it by about 25%. Both are, both are better than what we've got now. But, you know, all that stuff is in the DTBD department. As to the dam, removing it, you know, you, you've you, you've got to take down the whole thing, I think. Now, other, I'm sure that other alternatives might be considered because again, you know, the engineering study is going to go into all these little details like, are you going to have water at the, are you going to have water down here? Every, you know, all the water specialists tell us that, yes, you are. Are we going to have water available for the fire department by the dam if the dam is removed? The, everybody's assured us that that will be okay.
We've, you know, we've been hearing this, but we haven't gotten any document in writing that says this is going to happen.
I understand. We don't have the grant yet.
Right.
And I can assure you that, that, you know, everybody says, oh, tells me, don't worry about this. This will be easy. We'll get the water. You, you guys will have water. Maybe they're lying to me, but Brian, I don't think they are. And I, I sure hope not. And if they can't do it, then, then sorry, you know, they're not delivering their promises to us. Sorry.
Jim, why don't you let Alyssa, Alyssa love to speak?
Hold on, hold on. I'm gonna call on Wayne right now and then Annie. So Wayne.
I'm only, I'm only suggesting that Alyssa has had her hand up for some time and would like to speak.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Alyssa. I'm, I'm sorry. I'm breaking protocol.
I'd just like to. I'd just like to clarify a few points there. So I, I think we did do analysis of different alternatives regarding the dam during, well, not we. Dubois and King did that through the Weston Flood Resilience Study that they did. So that was when the alternatives of partial removal or, or I should say that alternative was considered to look at the flood reduction levels that that would have versus a full removal. And based on the data that was showed there through their modeling is why we decided that wasn't the path to go with because it didn't have the benefits that we were able to see with the full removal and didn't really justify, you know, moving this project forward. We wanted to see a, a better result. And so that, you know, through that analysis, basically, which I wasn't a part of, but that went into the river work that we did. We, we used Dubois and King's recommendations that came from that analysis on what we put forward to work with Stone Environmental through the river project in actually doing the preliminary design. So there, as far as the, you know, alternatives consideration or like changes at this point, I mean, there's, you know, there's, there's going to be detailed choices, I guess I should say, through the design that goes forward, you know, through the final design going forward, but nothing would be significantly changed because the budget is built around the choices that were made for, you know, the bridge and the dam removal at this point. So, I mean, it's, it can't be wholeheartedly, you can't receive a grant and then, and then significantly alter the project. I'm going to expect the funding agency to, you know, that just wouldn't work. So we would want to put forward something that, I mean, to this point, we've, you know, we've, we've worked with this project for quite a while and had a lot of, we had a public meeting where there are 75 people present and, you know, we've, we've worked on this project for some time with numerous meetings with the Weston Flood Resilience Committee and the Select Board to, you know, ensure that people are aware of this project and got a lot of input through it throughout the process of, of developing these grant applications. And this one, this, this most recent CDBGDR application did pop up more recently. We didn't have a lot of time to work on this application. It only came about maybe a month and a half ago, where we were made aware of the opportunity. So we had to basically utilize what was developed through the river project to, otherwise we wouldn't even be able to put in for this funding if we hadn't been able, if we hadn't had the river work already done. Because there's so much that goes into the application that we just wouldn't have had the time to develop some materials if they weren't already done. So that, for that reason, I mean, you're, you're fortunate to have had that river work and the work of Dubois and King done prior to enable us to put this grant application forward. But yeah, I mean, it consists basically of the, of the bridge, of sizing, the dam removal, stream channel, stabilization and sediment removal and, and dry hydrant retrofits at the fire station and the bridge are the primary components of this project. And the flood reduction modeling is very clear and was shown in the Dubois and King study. So I'd suggest if you haven't seen that, I mean, that's been available for, you know, probably a year now.
Hold on, I'm gonna change Denny, then Annie, then you Regina, right this.
I'm gonna go off track a little bit to try and get us out of what I'll call tunnel vision. We're talking a lot of money here. And the original request, I've been told by several different contractors, this project can't be done for that. And some questions I asked haven't been answered, but there's more on the table than just this project, folks. There's talk of a new firehouse. There's talk of a bond for new school building, which we are part of the red district. We've got town equipment, which inflation is rampant. We've all been through a tax reappraisal. And I don't know how the effects of seven, so you should think about the whole big picture here. And are we a community that wanna, that hasn't been in debt? Are we a community that wants to have a bunch of bonds to be paying off? Or do we want to maintain, hey, we're for your debt?
Good point. Okay, Annie.
I'll just try to be concise. I think from what I know, what I've read, I think my two major concerns in my own experience with the flood is being select board and working with Lisa very carefully and FEMA and Trystia agree is that I'm not really sure this is going to solve the problem because I think I'll quote Denny on this, is that there are a lot, the, the biggest problem with the last flood was the fact that a large tree with a huge root base lodged itself at the bridge. And as long as there are big trees with big root bases along the riverbanks, when we get high waters, they wash in and a couple feet of a bridge is not going to solve the problem of these big trees that are along the riverbank that get dislodged and then block it with a six to eight foot root base. And that was the biggest problem of our flood the last time was this huge root base that got stuck and every, and blocked the entire bridge and above the bridge. So everything flowed around, is flowed around it. Number two, I am very concerned about the aesthetics and the historical aspects of our village. We are a pastoral village. I think maybe there was a trust bridge before, but I think it was when the green was a frog pond and a refuge dump. And after the years of cultivating this central point of the green and this beautiful village, we have it recognized as one of the most beautiful villages ever, ever anywhere, especially throughout the state, that we maintain that element. And the entire village is on the historic register. So I assume you're going to, whatever design, you're going to have to go through some historical design review or approval, even as we did to take away the, the derelict dam. And then the other, only question I have, who do you consider stakeholders? Because in the proposal, it said that the final design will be of course up to the stakeholders and art, isn't the town a stakeholder? Who is going to be the stakeholders? I just wanted to be succinct so other people can have a chance to speak.
Stakeholder in the case of the dam is the community association. The community association owns the dam. And they, they are the, the final arbiters of, of the details of that design. As to the bridge, it's the town. And that is basically the select board. Because the town owns the bridge. So that's the answer to your question. Sorry.
So the details won't have any other additional public input? And if we approve this, you make the decisions on the design?
There, there will of course be public, you know, that's, that's, sorry, but we're not in the business of, of, you know, I'm, I'm sure it might, I mean, I see the number of people here and we obviously haven't been doing good enough job because I, I don't understand why you haven't been here before when we've been talking about all this stuff. But anyway, so Regina is next and then George, Regina.
Jimmy mentioned forty, forty percent of the engineering is sort of.
Thirty.
Thirty. Okay. Can I, I'll just base my question on that. So, so the additional seventy percent that needs to be done, would that be thrown into the pot with the grant if we were to?
Yes.
That grant?
Yes.
Okay. And then if, if there is a cost overrun on that to, to tag onto Danny's question, would that then come back to the, to the townspeople?
That's a good question. Alyssa, can you, can you address that?
Yes, overages would be the responsibility of the town.
So I may be guilty of, I may be guilty of not knowing about this earlier, but this is the first time I've even heard about the possibility of taking down the dam. That may be my fault, but um, I'm, I'm horrified by that idea. Actually, I, I'm shocked in so many ways because it's such a historic part of the town. It's so associated with the beautiful mill. I've been to a million Weston Playhouse plays very intervention. People are taking pictures of themselves. Surely they're going back home and talking to their friends about the beautiful town, this, this great dam and all that. And it just seems to me like a huge mistake to take away such an aesthetically beautiful tourist attraction, meaningful thing there. Things got flooded downstream of the dam. My understanding of taking away the dam is not going to reduce the amount of water running through the river. There's all kinds of reasons why there's a flood besides the dam. Is it there a way in which we can find a way to keep the dam, like find some other source of abatement around the dam in the event there's another hundred year flood? It just seems like a huge mistake to even think about taking it down.
I hear you. Dave, do you want to address that? Or I, I'd be glad to.
Look, whatever happens, most of the people in this room aren't going to be alive when it's done anyhow. This is going to be years and years and years. I mean, we're dealing with, you know, the federal government, we're dealing with the state government. I mean, we're a little tiny piece of this pie. For us to get even a sniff of this. Half of the people in this room aren't going to be alive.
Yeah. Hold on, George. Good, good point. Let me just, we've got two minutes to go.
Oh my.
Yeah. So let me, let me just throw out some numbers. Okay? That dam got rebuilt in 1999. It cost $700,000 in 1999. That was a twenty, a thirty year repair. So you can do the numbers. What do you, what do you think $700,000 is in 20, $30?
Why, why he has the question?
Because that dam is going to have to be rebuilt again. So let's say million, million four, somewhere in there. Because the dam, if, if, if there's a problem, it got inspected after the July storm and it passed with flying colors. But there's no guarantee that it will continue to pass. And that, that, the obligation to maintain that dam and ensure it and do all that falls directly on the shoulders of the community association. Dave, how, did you have that kind of money lying around in the community association?
We don't even have the money to fix the building so that we can open the building to the public.
So how about raising money, raising money to keep it?
Yeah.
I'm not talking about just this generation. I'm talking about the, the future and, and the, and the impact the dam has, albeit maybe small, some people's minds, not in my mind, to tourism and to jobs.
I, I understand. I understand.
So you raise the money like you raised the money from the library and you raise the money for so many other.
Yeah. And, and yeah, there, there are a lot of needs. What do you think the playhouse is going to need to raise to get that? Uh, what do you think the Playhouse is gonna need to raise to get that open, Dave?
A million nine.
Brian, what do you think a new firehouse is gonna cost? Two to four?
Jim, quick question relating to the firehouse. Will uh, removal of the dam lowering three feet of the water, will that uh, save the firehouse?
I don't know. I don't have, I don't have a dog in that fight. Just, oh, hold on. And by the way, all, all these flood reductions are just, the, the, the datum is July twenty-four, twenty-three storm. Will there be a worse storm? I'm betting there will be. So we're, we're not gonna make flooding go away. We're just gonna reduce it. Yeah, Katie.
Hi, just wanna address this. Hi, how are you? Alyssa Sabato has right now up on the screen, the idea of what it will look like with the dam not there. And there is, um, in the proposal, there is uh, you know, kind of detailed stuff. That, that will, that will show you what they are proposing in place of the dam, just to you know, add that. Uh, so there is, you know, there is, they're, they are taking to, into account the tourist aspect of it and redoing it in a way that would not save the firehouse, but uh, allow there to be a little more of a livable space above where the dam was.
I was wondering, had they also considered other mitigation ways? I know that the dam was rebuilt, they had that slew or whatever thing on the other side that with all the water ran while the dam was being rebuilt. Aren't there other solutions short of tearing down this thing?
But the dam has to be done. This is the year, like the dam is only safe, this is the last year. That is guaranteed. So there has to be a decision made.
Does anybody know that for sure?
Because it was a twenty-five year like guarantee when it was built in nineteen ninety-nine.
Yeah, and it may, may outlast that. And, and George, you're, you're asking the question, how does anybody know any of this stuff? I'll tell you what, none of us does. I don't, you don't. We're, we're just bumbling along the best we can. So, sorry. Les. Lee.
Lee.
I've been, yeah. The question was asked about flooding to the, the firehouse. Uh, if the dam is removed, the last meeting I was to, it said it would reduce the flooding to only three feet in the firehouse. So uh, it really doesn't do a bit of good, you know, removing the dam for firehouse protection.
I, I, Lee, I, I I don't, my understanding is different. My understanding from the hydraulic studies is that the, the flooding will be reduced at the firehouse by three feet. And, you know, but it was almost six feet. So, you know, whether you have two feet or three feet of flooding, but you know, just, that's it. So we're kinda out of time. Does anybody have anything important be, and, and if? Yeah, Andrew.
Who makes the decision?
The community association makes the decision on the dam because they own it.
Okay.
And the town.
Two separate entities are making two separate decisions.
Yes.
Dam and bridge separate, yeah.
Yes.
Okay.
Anybody? Sorry.
Karen.
Karen.
So the application is separate. The community and the town of Weston, is it a joint application?
Alyssa.
So it's an application from the town of Weston. They're the eligible applicant and the community association would be considered a partner, but the town is the actual applicant.
But, but the, the town will, you know, that's just a formality. The, the community association, they own the dam, they make the decisions.
Yes, and yeah, I, I mean, we, they have been support letters given from both the community association and the town for this grant application.
Alyssa, is, is the application now final? And are we awaiting a decision? Or will there be another chance for the town to get involved to say yes or no?
So the, the application is due on the thirtieth of September. So um, you know, the, the app, you know, this, this is the public hearing for the application. Um, we have the, you know, like I said, we've received support from the town and in all of the, in, in going ahead with developing this application, there isn't in the application process um, a, a time period at which.
Excuse me, I'm sorry. Let's, let's just listen to Alyssa here. Sorry, go ahead.
Um, there, there isn't an, in the application process, a point where it's, you know, um, approved by the town. If, if you wanted to have an approval process after this meeting, I don't, you know, that's on the town to decide at this point. I mean, you know, we've been direct, I've been putting together the application for a couple of weeks and you know, have, have received support in doing so. So um, you know, I should, like Jim said before, this is the only opportunity that I know of at this point to get this grant. So if this application does not go forward, or if it's not, if we don't get the money, if it's not awarded, then I don't know of anything else at this point that would fund this project. So, you know, it's, this is a wonderful opportunity. Quite frankly, it's a hundred percent funding. It's a, it's, it's a good chance. Funding it right now really is, is mostly going away for this type of thing. So you know.
Which, which design is being applied for of the ones you talked about?
That's part of the, yes, seventy, the, uh, the other engineering study.
I mean, okay, okay, so that decision's not been made?
No.
Okay.
So, um.
Well, I actually, I mean, as far as what's been written in the technical memo that Stone did, the bridge replacement would be with a new trust bridge with a sixty-five foot span and fifty foot clear height based on the recommendations.
What happens to raising the bridge as an option? Well, which you just said is not on the table.
Well, I, that hasn't been, at least with the river project, I mean, could we change that, Alyssa?
Um, well, the, the bridge, the bridge design, the bridge design was done by Stone. So I, I mean, we can't change the design at this point. It's, there was design alternatives that were considered while Stone was on board. We considered multiple types of bridges and we, and she shared um, visuals of different bridge choices. Um, and, and the trust bridge was what was ultimately decided on. So it would, it would have a minimum span of sixty-two feet with a rise of one foot above the BFE, the base flood elevation in the Weston flood study.
Yeah, that's.
It's technically, that's the least attractive.
I, I understand there's a lot of um, opposition to that. It was my understanding that in the final engineering study that, that modifications could be made.
Yeah, it's based on a contact colonial flat trust bridge with a cantilever sat sidewalk.
Yeah. And if, if that's the case, and, and there's, I mean, there's, we'll probably have to bring this, I, you know, the ordinary, in the ordinary course, in an issue like this, select board, we would bring this decision to the, to town meeting and have the town, whole town vote on it.
But that'll be, you lost the opportunity to go to, go for the funding. The funding will have been gone by then.
We don't have to accept the grant.
We don't have to accept it, but you missed the opportunity to accept it. So no, if we, if we went ahead with the grant now or, or applying for it and then everyone decided no, then we would just reject it if, if it ever came to us. But therefore we're locked into a design.
I have a question, Alyssa.
Sounds that way, yeah.
Alyssa, uh, I feel like I remember like Jim was saying that there was, uh, there, there was an option for the town. Like it, that was based on the previous grant. Is that because now we're planning for different money that it's changed? Because I feel like there was a, at times there, it was said that there would be an ability to change the design. It was just a, like a, a silent, like a placeholder bridge. That's what I remember. Just curious.
Um, well, I mean, as far as developing the, you know, we had to develop a budget, we have to develop, you know, a design for, to put forward for the grant application. So I mean, I wish Megan was here to talk about the bridge because she dealt with that specifically, but um, I mean, we, we did, it came down to a couple of options and I believe that that was the option that was chosen and that's why it's in the application. I would say that if there, it was a change in the bridge to type, then I mean, it would, um, we would wanna talk to Stone or whoever our consultant was at that point as to the cost difference um, between that, between that and what was budgeted. But you know, if it was a substantial difference or any difference really than what was rewarded, then um, that would be, you know, we would have to talk with the funding agency about it because it would be, you know, it wouldn't be what we would have applied for. We're applying for what was developed through the river work.
Uh, Alyssa, if, if uh, the, if the town decided that they did not want the Pony Trust Bridge and just wanted to continue with, you know, the I beam bridge, which probably would not raise the bottom of the bridge at all, but certainly widening it would increase the hydraulic capacity. And if that costs, costs more money, would, would we be able to, would the town be able to shoulder that extra expense and still move forward with this grant?
I would think so, yes.
Okay. That's.
The grant's not gonna change basically, but
Yeah.
as long as it was still able to fulfill the goals of the grant, I think we would be able to make an argument that, you know, the town's gonna cover the extra, but um, yeah, because of the change in design choice.
Okay, I'm gonna, we, we're gonna go for another three minutes until quarter of seven. Who feels like they're important, that, that they need one of those three minutes?
I'll, I'll seed mine with Will.
Okay, Will.
So sightlines, I assume, and accessibility were all taken into account when you came up with a bridge design?
Those who raised this questions, which would be solved in the subsequent engineering study? Yes.
Okay.
Okay.
And then briefly, that thirty-three point six million, does that include? And allowing for inflation, does that include any administrative fees from Wyndham Regional? Does that, are those in addition? Is the town responsible for these administrative fees? Uh, what, what are these administrative fees?
Alyssa.
So the first, your first question regarding the lines of sight, yes, all of that was considered in the design of the bridge. The second question, so just to correct, the budget is three point six or, you know, a little more than that million. And so it's not thirty-two. I think you said thirty-two point six million, so just wanna correct that. As far as the managerial costs, yes, there are, um, there are management costs rolled into the budget.
You said thirty-two point six million.
No, no, she said not.
You said, usually you miss, yeah, yeah, yeah. You said thirty-two.
Yeah, okay, Deb, you've got one minute. George, all, you, you know my number, George.
Yes, go ahead.
Okay.
Back to the design of the bridge, I believe that we have been led to believe by someone that the design that was presented by, for the Rivers Project was a placeholder. And that we would have an opportunity to weigh in on whether that was the type of bridge we wanted in Weston or not. And now I'm hearing something entirely different, which is very surprising to me.
We all are hearing it different.
We want to change it, we would have to pay for whatever the difference is. When it could have been, we, we were told all along that this was the thirty percent engineering stage and that there was a whole opportunity after this to make changes to do this. And now I'm hearing that's not the case. So I'm just a little confused and surprised.
Yeah, I am too.
You're not alone.
I think we all are.
My question since I got along. If this work is done, will eliminate or just reduce the risk of floods for all these buildings?
George, you know the answer.
I don't, I think Regina, it's just a reduction. We don't know anything. I really wonder why we're doing it.
Okay.
Okay.
But the answer to the, your, your question is, it's a reduction. The flooding is going to happen and probably, in my opinion, a, a flood worse than the July twenty-three flood is, is coming at us. You know, pick a number, fifteen years, five years, five months, twenty-five years?
But also maybe not.
Most likely not.
Your opinion, it could be, could be not.
And Dave said we're not gonna be alive, so it doesn't matter.
Anyway. Guys, thanks for coming. Uh, if you have any other questions, you know how to get ahold of me. And thanks for coming.
Thank you.
Thank you, Alyssa.
Well, we can, why, why should we not apply for it, Deb?
I'm not a select board member, it's up to you.
Yeah, we're, we're gonna apply for it because we can refuse it.
Right, we can always turn it down.
We can, we can always turn it down, we can always walk away, we can always get cold feet. Uh, we'll, we'll take care of it, George, thanks. Annie, Annie, we can always refuse the grant. So, so you know, that's, it's, to be saying things like that is unfair and unkind. And, and I, you know, I'm, I'm here to register my disapproval of that kind of talk.
I'm here to register my disapproval and it seems like there's so many decisions that are thirty percent and then we're hearing one side, it's not changeable, except that we can refuse the grant altogether, which if you say so, but uh, that's just fine, yeah.
Yeah.
So I have a lot of disapproval as well.
But you guys say you were just, you were surprised by this?
Yes, wait, this is the first time we've heard this.
We thought there was gonna be more.
That's what was told to us. So we, that's, so this only thing we can say is that we're equally surprised.
Why is it deadline so soon, so much?
No, no.
There's no chance.
We're, we're, this, this just came up. We found out about this like four weeks ago.
I should have, I should have put ice in it so it looks like water.
The original one.
The original one, she's been working on this for damn near ten years.
So if they're, if you got the dam and the bridge, are they gonna coordinate?
That's the idea, that's, 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 that's the idea, that's what Stone did for the. No, he's on the website. Yeah, no, there's a whole thing. The town's website, the whole is on the link.
Hey, anybody here has it signed up?
I and I hung out with, with one night out with the last, it was like, I was.
Yes!
I'm so sorry about Malcolm.
Sorry. Doing three things at once.
Uh, like.
There you go, Shawna, this is signing. Part, part of the water to hydrate. We have to be able to flow a certain number of gallons, try to maintain it for a certain number of hours.
My understanding was that they, that the expert yeah, and if we, I'm just saying, if we can't, if, if you can't do it, can't do it, we lose. Yeah, and if we, I'm just saying, if we can't, if, if you can't do it, can't do it, we lose our ISO rating, everybody's insurance. Well. I didn't know if you were aware of that. Uh, I, all I know is the state expert came down and said.
They can do it.
They can do it. And, and they know it's for a fire department, so I'm assuming they know about ISO. Yeah.
That's my celebration.
Can I ask a question about the meeting? Last meeting, they were gonna talk about the, the new tax policy, are you not gonna do that? This, not this meeting, no, okay.
It's on the agenda for.
See ya.
See ya, next one.
We'll call, uh, select meetings order at about, uh, seven fifty. What's enough, uh, any changes to the agenda, yeah?
I'd like to put, um, Town Highway Grant on the, move the Town Highway Grant to the agenda.
Okay. Okay, uh.
We have to vote on anything, I don't, I'm not sure that.
Well, we brought up under.
Sure.
Uh, public comment. Okay, uh, unless somebody. Jack, uh, hit three for now and go to, uh, number four, list three.
There will only be two of us, because we just lost Dan. Yeah. All right, so we have, uh, six properties. You wanna go through them or?
Yep, I'm.
I don't think I have it, wait, is this?
It's a requirement, we have to put an E and O and if, if there's a wrong. That's why, but there's no effect because the calculation is fine. Some kind of. And leave. Again, we had, we had trouble with mailing from our reappraisal up, they didn't. Actual lot of the new addresses and things, and so, uh, she did not receive the mailings sent out and. We reviewed it a few weeks ago, we drove up there, looked at the property and found out that. That it's, it's pretty well logged in there and, uh, there's not the view, even though they have high value on it. Drop the, we dropped the old overall value by eight two thousand. Chris Lindgren has property on Route one hundred, vacant land, he's got. Fuggering there, uh, he's got a, uh. Shared septic and is right away, I think it's to Pososu, is that my? Property, yeah, and, uh. It floods and does all kinds of stuff, so he's, has us to look at it and. He thinks it's unusual, unus, unusable or unbuildable, whatever, and we agreed. Building a guest house across the street from the main property and somehow they had, uh, an acre of land. Double counted on the new property and combined the piece, when they broke this out. For the, for the guest house. What happened was it probably has a. Site value also, which is completed, so, but anyway, that, basically it was a ninety nine, point ninety nine acres that, uh. I'd like to drop this property six for the moment. Hill property and, uh, Wyndham and Windsor. Uh, had, there are two bill, uh, two tax bills, one for the land and one for the building. And, uh, Wyndham and Windsor sends those bills to the, uh, for less ease to pay tax bills. So, uh. There was a, Susan came in and with pictures and, and showed us where her property. Was being, it was being inundated by, uh, drainage from properties around her. People put culverts in to drain their properties and she had, um. Stevens and Associates come in and, and she paid for a, an engineer's report, and they're the same people that do them. That did the playhouse. I think they're a rep, they're doing a nice job for us over there at WCA, so. We took a look at it and said, yeah, okay, we could, you could drop that land value. Now, the. Public bias, public bias and charitable statute. Somehow in. The, in our new program, A, AP five, they, they do all their work in AP five and that, but that's. Now I'm talking about the reappraisal books, okay? They then have to sync it with NIMRIC. What, what, in the syncing, it doesn't pick up a number of. It's a PC, you have to go in, lay it out, and do it manually. Some reason, the playhouse. Didn't get, didn't get manually put in as, as a redax.
Somewhere along the line, what about the, uh, priory, are they involved in all this?
Actually, no, they, they, different issues, but, uh, it, it, the exemption came up. But Linda and I just looked through everything and, and they are exempt.
Yeah, I know they're.
Not an issue. Is this the playhouse building or the Walker Farm here? I'm sorry, what?
The, the Weston Playhouse.
Oh, that's the, uh, Walker Farm.
What, okay.
So what, they broke out the hub buildings. Garn and, and the house, property around that, that's not taxing.
I guess my question is. The priory and all this here. Were added into the grand list that was sent to the state, correct?
Yes.
And so now you have pulled back these here plus the priory. So, money wise, how much effect is that having on? Our amount of money we actually raise through taxes. I mean, so, uh, say for example, we were gonna raise a million dollars with the grand list way it was, it got tinkered with. And now with the grand list back down where it is, we are only raising nine hundred thousand. So we're short a hundred thousand dollars now, in real numbers, what are we gonna be short?
It's, the net tax effect I have on each one of them, so the playhouse, I mean, the Walker Farm is twenty six thousand.
Yeah, I added it up, it's about thirty one thousand dollars, but it doesn't include the priory.
No, because you just checked and the priory is exempt.
Right, you just said that it was sent up in the total grand list. I asked if their numbers were sent in the total grand list and you said yes.
I have a question, I have a question to clarify.
Trying to figure out.
Okay, no, I have a question to clarify the, the whole thing, just I'm curious about the process and also going hand in hand with what Denny is asking about the money and. Getting it, so, talk, going back to like, it's a new program, right, so you have the new program and then you, when you're. Merging the two, you're transferring over from, I, I don't, I'm not saying this correctly, I'm sorry, but. Um, NIMRIC, is that what it's called? So you have the other one and then you have NIMRIC. But it didn't transfer over with the playhouse being exempt, but it did for the priory, I don't understand how, is it like a? I'm just curious how like those two nine.
Put in manually.
Okay, but the priory was put in manually and the playhouse was not.
Because we had, um, conversations with Brother Michael and, and, uh. Somebody else there, I only know him, and, uh, in that process, we said, oh. Make sure that that's, that's exempt, so, so that was done manually.
That was done manually.
Grand list was never affected by the priory being an incorrect number like it was for the playhouse, right?
Correct, the final, the final submission.
Okay.
It should come out as exempt.
Alright, so basically, we're looking for thirty round numbers.
So far.
So far.
Well.
Thirty, thirty one thousand.
Always get an Arizona mission until December thirty first, and the final, final, final goes in. Cause, you know, the things, the current use.
So.
Change, yeah, but, so, okay, right now, yeah, thirty one thousand.
And ground figures for starting one. So do we have to, uh, figure a way to absorb that? Do we send out a second tax bill or what do we do?
I do not believe we need to send out new tax bill. We have a fund balance, which is the difference between our assets and our liabilities and it. It kind of goes up some years, if you have a deficit, it draws it down. But at the end of last year, we had two hundred and forty two thousand dollars in the general fund of fund balance. And best practice is to always have about two months of fund balance to cover emergencies if something were to be catastrophic. And so we've had that, but I believe we can draw that down based on how our numbers end up at the end of the year. If we are short thirty thousand dollars, it comes out of the fund balance. And so we have cash, we have money, it's two hundred and forty two thousand at the end of last year. And I do not believe we need to send out new tax bills because of.
I have a question about this fund balance, sorry, uh, is this like, uh, something that like every year, like?
Yeah, it kind of ebbs and flows, um, last year, the highway fund balance was a hundred and ninety eight thousand. And so if you'd had a major shortfall, even twenty thousand, it could have drawn down out of the fund balance.
Okay.
Had a deficit, but you wouldn't have had to make that up in the new year through taxes.
Right.
And so the fund balance is really, um, an emergency savings account based on how we're collecting our revenues. That's my simplest way of thinking.
Okay.
So, I guess you're looking for approval to file this, uh, Arizona mission.
If some move.
Second. Discussion on it.
Right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys. Oh, let's see, number three, review.
Okay, uh, number five, public carrying possible adoption of Park Street one way ordinance.
Where's that?
That came from V Trans.
Uh, because it's not listed as a one way street, and if we want it to be a one way street, we have to adopt that. I, I, none of the records I could find ever ha- has it listed as a one way street. It is, a couple of years ago, had the double yellow line, which really confused everyone. Um, we've, as a town, I believe, always used it as a one way, it's just not recognized as that. So in order for us to do that, we have to adopt the ordinance, which is on that second page, and then I just wrote like a brief.
Wait, this one?
Yes, that's the motion, and then.
That's the motion, right, and the page after that is the ordinance.
Um, and it's all, like Megan, V Trans looked at it for me, they say that it looks fine, um. Uh, if we do adopt it, I just have to post it for, um, sixty days, I believe. Online, and then if we, you know, if the town starts petition saying that they don't want it, then we have to provide.
Do you have any information on this, Jeff?
You know, I think, you know, the parking spaces were kind of done for paying for one way traffic. We usually, you know, plow up kind of one direction, you know, I think it always was a two way street. I think there's several years it turned into a one way street and.
When they're trying to create more parking.
I know, I always knew it as a one way street.
Me too, me too, she called, I was like, I, I, I mean, I've lived here my whole life, I believe.
Upper age, I know.
Yeah.
You remember when?
I mean, I have it, but.
Megan Brunk about this, the, the, my understanding is the thing that will happen after sixty days if we pass this. Is that V Trans is gonna put the same kind of signs on the Route one hundred side as they had up before and. And, uh. You know, we'll, we'll be responsible for signage on this side, and there's some suggestions, but. It sounds to me like, if we leave it the way it is, nobody will. Honestly, we'll, we'll come up, we'll complain.
Last thing, we need more signage.
Yes.
So we're not required, is what you're saying?
Uh, that's my understanding.
Okay. Cool.
And so, uh, just to keep, keep things moving here, I'm gonna move that the, so, Western Select Board adopt the ordinance. Regulating one way traffic on Park Street, designating Park Street as a one way westbound beginning at the intersection. Of Park Street and Main Street, which is Vermont Route one hundred and ending at the intersection of Park Street and Lawrence Hill Road. Effective sixty days from adoption unless petition to town meeting pursuant to twenty four VSA section nineteen seventy three.
Discussion.
Discussion. I'll hold some favor.
So this is what we need to sign again.
Thank you.
I guess now we're down to the, uh. Yes, we have, um. It's okay, we can look at it.
I just got them. And then everyone came in and I just got too nervous.
So many people.
I'll move for payroll of eleven thousand, two hundred and twenty-six dollars and forty-seven cents.
A second.
Yeah, discussion. All in favor.
Okay, well, just to get things moving, I'm going to move. That we approve, uh, county table checking out report number eighteen and the amount of forty-four thousand, seven hundred and forty-three dollars and nineties four cents.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor.
Thank you.
Who would move this?
In your package, there is.
Oh, this is just me.
The library. Update letter that.
Nope, that's it, did I give it back to you?
Should be in your package.
Yes, to this one.
Oh, okay.
Yes, saw that.
Sorry, what did you say, babe? I'm sorry.
In the old and new. Parts, there is a library update.
Oh, yeah, I read that.
Right.
Yeah.
We're, we're holding off on the delinquent tax policy, right?
I was not sure who was coming to the meeting, so I did move it.
And the opioid settlement, I ended up with the Attorney General?
Are you looking for money?
Trying to figure out how much money they're talking about is what we, part of what we were asking.
Yeah, well, I guarantee you the state's going to eat the lion's share.
Yeah, well. Two thoughts we needed on that, which is what the amount is and then whether or not we put it in our fund or with our mother kind of group fund, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right, uh, Jeff's got a highway grant you want to talk about?
I'm going to keep this very generic because I don't want to get. Too involved, I've been asked not to come to this meeting tonight. By one of the selectmen. I just want to say to you that. We have a grant that we're trying to complete down on White Road and Old Tower. There've been some very serious allegations from out there by a property owner. And at this point. I don't feel comfortable doing any more work down there. The state is coming on Friday to take pictures of the work. If you don't get paid for the grant money. Just don't blame me. And if anyone of you guys want to call me tomorrow, I will explain the whole situation to you, but. There's some culverts that the ends. According to the state grant need to be stoned on the outlet ends. There's some seeding and mulching that. Green Mountain Power. At one point said they were all down there, now they're saying. They'll come back there. I explained to them that it needed to meet the standards of the grant. And they have, as of this evening, they haven't done it. So if you don't get the money. Don't look at me. We want to get more into it, we can, but I've been asked to keep it very generic and I'll keep it very generic for the moment.
What do we do an hour tomorrow, I'll call you, I guess, if we're not talking about it now, because I don't know what we're talking about.
I think we. Being as today's Tuesday, yeah, Wednesday, Thursday, and then there coming Friday, I guess if there's questions, it should be asked now and.
Well, I. I think the first thing we need to do.
You have a spider on you.
No, it's not that big. I think the first thing we need to do is. Get complaints. To stop complaints and allegations to stop coming to one select board member. And having that member trying to handle us. And I'm being very generic here. These, these allegations that were made. Monday were pretty serious allegations. I wanted to, so somebody's lying to me, somebody said, you know, Green Mountain Tower or somebody from. Sergeant told them that I was going to tear this guy's split rail fence down and this, that and the other thing, so. I texted the guy that I've been dealing with to Green Mountain. And I said, look, this, this, I was told that somebody told this homeowner that I was going to tear down his fence and. You know, you guys told him that and this conversation never occurred and he got right back to me and said. Absolutely, that conversation never occurred and, and our people shouldn't have, you know, if our people said anything, they shouldn't even have been talking to the guy. So there's, and that was one, that was the, the least of the two allegations. Um, and, and so. You guys, if some, if the select board member, two select board members want to be down there and authorize tomorrow what needs to be done. And stand there and watch it, I'll send somebody down there who. Will do it or leave it as it is and you take your chances. Um, I'm just saying. Don't, don't look at me, I do have a meeting with Scott Jensen that nine o'clock tomorrow morning. On the Greendale Bridge thing, but, um. Anyway, uh, I, I, I really. Disappointed and, um. I think it's, I, I think we're on a slippery slope when we start letting what property owners tell us what we can do in the town right away.
I have to agree with that.
I'd like more information, so I, I guess this is not the form, so we can always talk tomorrow, you can physically show me what we're talking about, maybe that would be helpful.
I'm saying that if we want to lose, if we want to lose the money, I mean, I'm not planning on going there tomorrow and working on it at this point. I've been asked not to discuss this at this meeting. That's all.
Thanks, Jeff.
Is there anything here, I mean, does anyone know more what we're talking about or should I just call Jeff?
Not exactly, just hearsay and from what I heard her hearsay and stuff, I've even called names and I haven't even discussed it with anybody.
You've been called names since?
Yeah.
Okay.
And I haven't even discussed it with anybody. What it boils down to is a property owner. Thinks that they own right to travel ports and they wanna, don't want town do what they're supposed to do. But they can take their clippings and stuff and dump them in the town ditch, then it's up to us to take care of it.
So this has to do with the ditching that we were formally previously talking about?
Might have, I don't know, but, uh, I think the only thing to do is, uh. Either do it by phone or. Video camera. Tom, we can have videotape everything. Yeah, office, we can videotape everything.
But if Jeff's not, we just sit there.
We can leave him a message on his phone after he's done with Jeff or Scott Jensen, and he can send the crew down and. Get started. I mean, we've got to draw a line in the sand someplace about being able to do downward on our road. So the highway right away. We can't have individuals.
Is, is this, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to cut you off, please.
Can't have each individual property owner dictating what's done in front of their place, the state. Says this is what you gotta do. Let them argue with the state, don't get the workers involved. It's not their choice, the state says you got this grant, you do this work.
So this, this is an argument with one of our residents, that's, is that what I'm getting here?
Property owner, I don't know if they're resident.
Okay, property owner.
That's my suggestion on, but. I'm unfortunately. I'm having character grease next month on both eyes and my time schedule is pretty well comped up. For the rest of the fall, but. And I just got back Sunday night after a long drive. So. Okay.
All right.
Is that what you want to do, is have everybody on videotape?
Yeah. I feel like there should be some kind of documentation of what's going on. And I'll call Jeff.
Anything else to be said on the subject?
No.
Anybody else had anything?
I just need a signature from Katie and Denny for the resolution for the application.
Okay.
And you're up top and Katie, you.
Thank you.
Yes, nobody else has anything? We will get together again on the. Excuse me, I'm not home, but. Meeting's adjourned. And.
Now, I feel whatever you started to talk to me on the.
Oh, yeah, um.